Good evening. We will reconvene the regular city council meeting for the City of Lompoc for July 18th, 2023. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Cordova is absent. Councilmember Ball?
Here.
Mayor Potem Dirk Starbuck?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here. Mr. Malave, do we have any reportable action from closed session?
Mayor, the city council met in closed session to discuss the labor negotiation item on the agenda. Staff gave, sorry, council gave direction to staff on that item, but there was no reportable action. Take it.
Thank you. Pastor Nate Marsh, come to the podium and join us for the invocation and the pledge to follow.
God, thank you for this beautiful place where we live, and the weather has been amazing. It reflects your goodness, and you have provided for us and given us many blessings. We have some beautiful parks, and there's been some revitalization, some new stores that have opened. Thank you for your continued blessing. As always, we lift up our police, fire, and emergency response personnel, keep them safe as they address desperate and dangerous situations. It's pretty dry this time of year, so protect us from fires and their destruction. Lord, give our police, fire, and emergency response personnel wisdom on how to best help in the crises they confront. God bless this council and all of our city's administrators. Guard their health so that they can focus on serving our community well and care for their families and loved ones. Minimize their stress and anxiety as they direct their own personal lives and the health of the city, and give them insight to know the right paths for our community. God, give them honor among the people, that they would be held in high regard with respect. God, you see the struggles of our city and the struggles this council wrestles with. I think of our need for housing and the difficulty to find a place where housing could be developed. Open doors, provide answers. God, would you build a unity among our people? It creates a community pride, that there be an attitude of thankfulness at the privilege of living in such a beautiful place with so many different types of people, and that through this council, problems and struggles could be addressed. God, help us to look to you to provide the ultimate answers, because you are our Creator, Sustainer, and Protector. Bless this time and show your work among us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if I could have the Parks and Recs Division join me at the podium. I think it's important for the community to know who's made such huge improvements to our parks. This is for Park and Recreation Month of 2023, whereas the City of Lompoc recognizes the importance of equitable access to local parks, recreation, trails, open space, and facilities for the positive development of all our communities, and therefore declare the month of July 2023 as Parks Make Life Better Month. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and activity, and supports safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in their recreational opportunities. And whereas Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences through youth sports and enrichment activities, teen centers and programs, senior activity centers, adult fitness and enrichment programs, free community events, and beyond, and fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks, and ensuring all people have access to its benefits. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical, and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities, and strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community character, heritage, culture, history, aesthetics, and landscape. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in their recreational opportunities and remains versatile and innovative in providing vital services to communities through local, national, and global emergencies, all while adhering to guidelines set forth by governing agencies. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim that July is recognized as Parks Make Life Better Month and encourage all citizens to recognize the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. And I think it's really important, as we've come through the pandemic, how much we realize that having 200 acres of parks in our community was vital to us being able to get outdoors, and to invest in those parks is an important part of us coming back together and doing community activities. And having the Parks and Recreation programs is something our youth desperately need, especially during the summertime. So I want to thank all of the staff. Often after the Flower Festival, the park looks a little haggard, but I was driving by the other day, and I thought, it looks amazing for just having had some major events at it. So I just want to congratulate you all for weathering the storm, doing a lot with a little for a long time, and for doing even more now that we're able to invest in them, and it's getting better all the time. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, the city council, and all the members in the audience. Again, just want to thank the council for your continued, the support of Parks and Recreation, giving us those essential tools then to do what we do. We put together a little video for tonight to give a little glimpse into Parks and Recreation, but again, it wouldn't be possible without the individuals here, our team, our Parks and Recreation, the commission, and we have one, the commissioner here, and all our dedicated staff, and the 70-plus part-timers that you see as well. Without them, it wouldn't be possible. So thank you, guys, for all your dedication, all the weekends and nights and everything. We really appreciate that, but thank you for this as well. Appreciate that.
Thank you. I also presented a key to the city to the Pedal the Pacific young women. They rode through town this weekend. They arrived on Sunday. They took two rest days in our community. Normally, they spend a single night and continue from here on down to San Diego. They started in Seattle last month, so they will have completed over 1,500 miles, and as part of their fundraising and focus, it's to identify and advocate education and awareness regarding sex trafficking. So the young ladies stayed two nights with us. They had a chance to go and tour the base yesterday and get to know our community a little better. And then we, Councilmember Ball, and Councilmember Cordova, and myself, were in attendance at a reception that AEW and the North County Rape Crisis Center held to honor them and introduce them into the community and do some more fundraising. And in a twist of events, they very kindly actually made a very significant donation from their fundraising back to the North County Rape Crisis Center of $5,000, where the only community organization in the state that will have received a donation from them. They made one in each state that they're passing through. So we presented them with that and congratulated them on the difficulty and hard work that it is to pedal a bicycle 1,500 miles across the Pacific, California, Washington State, and Oregon. So I did present that as part of it. City Manager, do you have a report for us?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you to the parks, too. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you, guys. Kind of want to share a little update with you. In early June, we responded to an emergency with Fire Engine 51, and we had a tool stolen from us, an extraction tool, and some people call it the Jaws of Life. It's about a $20,000 tool that was stolen. We reported it to the police department, but I wanted to say thank you to Scott Nunez, who actually searched the internet, went through a bunch of media channels trying to find this tool, and he actually found it. He actually was able to match the serial number. The guy was nice enough to post the serial number so we could make sure it was ours. We got with PD. PD did a great job of going out and working with the San Luis Police Department, because that's where he was selling it. And we were able to recover it, and we got it back June 30th, so that's pretty exciting news. So. I want to recognize a couple of people who made that all happen. Of course, Scott Nunez, our battalion chief, Louis Farrar, and the police department, our corporals, Henry Strong, David Garcia, and David Magagna. If it wasn't for you guys taking an extra effort, we would never get that tool back, so thank you, guys. Other than that, I want to encourage everybody to come out for our 135th city birthday. That'll be August 11th through the 13th. The 11th, we'll be having the Old Town Market with a cruise. The 12th, we'll have a car show, and the 13th, we'll be doing a dedication for Centennial Park, and hopefully have that done. I encourage everybody to come out and enjoy the best of activities. Thank you.
Don't forget that August 1st is National Night Out from the Police Department, so that will happen from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Thompson Park, so don't forget that. That's exciting to be able to bring that back, so thank you. So this is going on, too.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions for City Manager before we go on to Consent Calendar? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Consent Calendar. Before public comment, I believe our Human Resource Director has statements he needs to publicly make regarding items six and seven.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, audience, and audience at home. Items number six and seven are amendments of the Compensation Plan for managerial, supervisory, and confidential and unrepresented city employees. They set salaries and benefits for those city employees at the levels listed in the staff report and the attachments to those staff reports. The recommendation in the staff report is to adopt. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would like to speak on any item on Consent Calendar, this is consent calendar only, you may come to the podium. You have three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if anyone comes forward or calls, I will read the process for Consent Calendar into the record. All items listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the Consent Calendar for separate discussions will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will close oral communications and bring it back to council. Is there any questions or an item council would like to pull? Councilmember Ball?
Let's see, I have just a, hopefully just a couple of quick questions on items 12 and 13, although City Attorney hopefully will let me know if I get too long-winded on item 13. Item 12, I think that's actually really good news. I just want to make sure the community is aware of what that is. Maybe someone can give me a little clarity on what this item is about.
That would be either Mr. Guerrero or Ms. Alarcon.
And I promise, no gotcha questions. This is good news. It's...
Sure. So over a year ago, we applied for the Anderson Rec Center Clean Air Grant, and it's to install some HVAC units to create a clear air center at our Anderson Rec Center, so when there's fires, wildfires, or, you know, just bad air days, it allows for community members to have a place where they can go, who may be part of the vulnerable population, and they would be assured that it will be clean, fresh air that they could breathe and hang out and probably cool down also. So we were able, we were awarded funding of 166, or how much did we get? We didn't get the full funding. It was like 50%, so we're asking for funding to fill the other half.
So again, this is on Consent Calendar. I don't think it's controversial. I think this is great news, and the reason I wanted to bring it up is a lot of you will remember before they made us wear masks during the pandemic that they passed out masks here in Lompoc because there was a bunch of fires up north, and it wasn't that long ago where the air quality here in Lompoc was just awful. So again, there are those folks that don't necessarily have great facilities to live or reside in, so this is a great opportunity to have a clean airspace should we be under a big cloud of smoke or ashes from somewhere else. So I think that's really great news. Item 13, if we could, obviously, this is, we're going to tighten up some of the restrictions around the airport, and goes without saying, although I'll say it, there will be some impacts. So I was just curious if you wanted to take a stroll through this item real quick, or if we should maybe separate it and talk about it later, because it is a serious issue. It's going to impact...
I think the main concern about the airport property is you have people that are hanging out, and they're running all over the place, and that's problematic when you have planes landing on the runway, and also the health issues there and public safety issues. So there's a number of reasons why we're hoping that we could make that a no trespassing zone.
So I guess the only question that I would have is, obviously, there may be some people that are affected because they are living in the riverbed. Are we confident that we have some sort of active plan to move them along, work with the county, push them into services? How are we...
Anytime we notify them, we always make sure we try and get them services. We did that across the street on the east side of the airport property. We spent a lot of time with the Bridge House and City Net trying to get them into programs if that's the best avenue to get them off the streets. It's not right that they're living in the riverbed, you're right, but we're definitely planning to take that action.
Thank you. Now, I just wanted to let everyone know, this is just one small piece of what's going to have to be multiple efforts over time for us to deal with this issue for those that are unhoused. So I'm in support of this, because I feel like we've got to do our best on our side and push the county to help us where they can. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns with any item on Consent? Councilmember Vega?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Consent Calendar as written.
All right. I'll second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. And that passes for zero. All right, the next item on the agenda is a presentation from our Community Development Program Manager, Chanelle Ovaya, regarding our subrecipient compliance status report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, staff, and members of our community. My name again is Chanelle Ovaya, and I'm the Community Development Program Manager. I am here tonight to present to you the 2022 Annual Compliance Report. On April 15th, 2014, the City Council adopted the subrecipient Financial Programmatic and Programmatic and Monitoring Report Requiredment Policy. The policy requires an annual compliance report be presented to the City Council at a public meeting annually by the Community Development Department staff at the second meeting in July or soon thereafter. The annual monitoring includes the reports submitted are as listed on the screen. Each report has various compliance requirements described in their corresponding regulatory Let's begin with the Audit for Compliance Finding Report. This report requires agencies who receive $50,000 or more of city funding in any single year submit financial reports. The city's Management Services Department provided July 11th, 2023, Compliance Committee Draft Meeting Minutes to the Community Development Department that reflected three agencies' requests for alternate reporting for financial information. The committee voted to require the agencies, the Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce, Lompoc Museum Association, and the Central Coast Literacy Council, to submit independent financial statements, reviews prepared by certified public accountants by January 24th. No, sorry about that, by January 2024, in order for the committee to comply with the city's monitoring policy for the audit, compliance, finding, and review report. The Subrecipient Compliance Status Report. This monitoring consists of activity, site visits, review for agency fiscal management, and program compliance with federal, state, and local requirements described in the agreement. Reflected are the agencies visited that received the funding through the CDBG and Human Services Program. One out of eight of the programs was issued a finding, and all of the others were in Multifamily Affordable Housing Monitoring. Monitoring consists of housing quality standards, inspections of a minimum of 25% of units, the tenant files for those units, and project files for those properties with regulatory agreements. The Community Development Division paired with the Building and Safety Division to complete inspections of 84 units. 76% of those units were compliant at the visit, with the remaining percentage equating to 20 units, requiring a corrective action plan. Most findings were as simple but equally important as replacing batteries and smoke detectors and routine maintenance. Single-family affordable housing monitoring. Monitoring consists of annual verifications of owner occupancy of single-family homes, verification of insurance, and requirements described in reported regulatory agreements. Review included the homes that received assistance under the Rehabilitation Loan Program. A total of 63 homes were monitored. All but three properties are compliant to date. Staff is still in the process of obtaining information from those three properties in Fiscal impact. Although there is no direct fiscal impact through accepting this report, there is a fiscal component related to the cost of staff's time to conduct the monitoring. This year, efforts from eight city staff, one councilperson, and three commissioners worked a total of 264 hours at a cost of $25,516.67 to produce this report to council. Staff will continue efforts with corrective action plans and provide a report in January. This concludes my presentation. Thank you again for your time, and I'm available for any questions or comments.
Councilmember Ball?
I had, thank you very much for your presentation. I had one quick question. There was one of the slides, I think it was the multifamily one, and this may have nothing to do specifically with this report, but it looked like more than a couple were out of compliance. What does that mean when that happens?
There are just things, like when we showed up to the unit, they may have needed, like batteries, or in their smoke detectors, or maybe they had a small leak or something in their faucet. We do not pass those until the landlord fixes those units.
Are most of them kind of basic fixes?
Most of them are basic fixes, yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
We didn't cover on this one our homebuyer assistance. Is that part of what you monitor?
Yes, actually, the homebuyer assistance program is included in the single-family monitoring report.
It is with the single. Financially, everything is as it should be?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any money left in the homebuyer assistance program?
Yes, we do. In fact, I'm very excited to say that we are updating the program, and our community will be able to access the new information sometime this month. I'd say give it at least a week or two, but we are increasing the dollar amount that we can lend to first-time homebuyers, and they can still apply and receive a portion, a small grant to help them with their escrow closing costs.
That is excellent. I have new neighbors, and they were very anxious to stop and tell me that they had taken advantage of the program, and that's how they were able to get into their starter home.
That's awesome.
Really, really exciting to hear that, that it helped, and I knew somebody that it had helped, so thank you for that. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now is your opportunity for oral communications for anything that is not currently on the agenda that is city-related. So if you'd like to speak, you have three minutes. You may come to the podium. If you would like to call in, the number to call in is 805-875-8201. You will have three minutes.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is James Ball. I'm pastor for the last three years of the First Apostolic Church here in Lompoc. It was established back in February of 1970 by the late Reverend Del Rose and his wife Dorothy. She's here with us tonight, and many members of our church are here tonight. We have, for the last 10 years, operated TNT fireworks booths. And the community, we had tried to have a community fun place for people to come and have a good time, buy fireworks, but we wanted them to have a good time while they were there, and the workers there are all church members, we're all volunteers, and they put in a lot of hard work and a lot of long hours. And we've been doing this for 10 years, but our situation is that we've been paying 30% of our proceeds to the city to sell these fireworks. And this was, the 30% was supposed to be, it was stated that this would help put on a community fireworks display, of which we've not had a display for many years. So being a community-minded church, we're trying to help out with the community. We've had, we've paid the city, we had curbs and gutters, sidewalks put in, street whitening, we've paid our fair share, and we're just asking for some consideration that we'd like this to be put as an agenda item on the next city council meeting, that this would come up as a vote to reduce the 30% down to maybe a 15%. We understand there are operating costs for fire and police protection and other things like that, but we're asking that this be reduced to help out these nonprofit organizations, of which we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. And so some of the money that has gone to the city, if it's not going to be to support a community event, we could sure use it in our bank account to help us offset our operations and maintenance of our property. And I think 15% is a reasonable figure to give to you, and if it later comes up that we're able to have the event again, then we would like to come back and discuss how we can help out doing that again. But until this event does take place, we would like the city to take this as an agenda item on your next meeting and have a vote so it does go on the record, how the city council votes to reduce the 30% down to a 15%. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you showing your sign of support. One of the things we don't do is clap, so that it doesn't detract from somebody who might not agree with you. You're more than welcome to do silent support with wave, but clapping or booing or things like that tend to detract. So I know it feels weird, but that's something we try and avoid doing.
Mayor, councilmembers, the Employee Development Association, EDA, of the City of Lompoc is a nonprofit organization comprised of dedicated city employees who are committed to giving back to our community by providing scholarships and sponsoring community events. Annually, EDA has honored, has been honored, to participate in the sale of safe and sane fireworks. Unfortunately, this year, EDA experienced a significant setback due to a break-in and theft that resulted in the loss of substantial portion of our fireworks inventory, as well as an expensive generator and other valuable items. This incident has been a profound impact on the EDA's ability to fulfill its mission. As the Lompoc City Council, you have the unique opportunity to provide much-needed relief and support, not only to the EDA, but also to the nonprofit organizations selling fireworks and the communities they serve. We humbly ask the council to graciously consider the following. Add it as an agenda item, a comprehensive staff report. We seek a thorough staff report detailing the current fund balance and overview of the utilization of funds over the past three years, and a breakdown of the costs associated with organizing this year's event at Ryan Park. And lastly, a temporary reduction of the city share contingent upon the city hosting a Fourth of July fireworks show. We kindly request the city to consider a temporary reduction in its current requirement of receiving 30% of the proceeds until the city is able to organize a fireworks show. As a potential solution, we propose either a reduction to 5% of the proceeds or the implementation of a flat fee of $2,000, whichever amount is greater, for each of these six participating groups. This adjustment would provide necessary... This adjustment would provide necessary support to the groups involved while awaiting the opportunity to host a fireworks show in the city. Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, and citizens, my name is Steve Bridge. I am on the Board of Directors of the Fallen Warrior Charity that maintains the Fallen Warrior Memorial Park in Beatty. The Senior Citizens Charity that provides entertainment and recreation for seniors, operates the senior thrift store and provides emergency, emergency supplies for seniors. The Barking Dog Park Charity, which maintains and operates the dog park in Lompoc. The River Bend Park Charity, which maintains and operates an off-road trails and jumps parks for the youth in Lompoc. The Lompoc Hike and Bike Trails, which is in the process of creating hiking trails at, uh, Lookout Point. And finally, the Lompoc Flower Festival, which puts on the annual flower festival for all to enjoy. Each and every one of these Lompoc charities wishes to support the reallocation of funds raised from the sale of safe and sane fireworks and send them back to the charities until such time as our city is able to once again provide Fourth of July fireworks. Thank you.
I'm William Skyler, representing tonight the Motorsports Division of the Lompoc Valley Park Recreation Pool Foundation, who for the last four or five years has had a fireworks booth. Now, originally, the background on that was that fireworks shows were getting so expensive that it was hard to raise the money to do it. It belonged to a fraternal organization that supported fireworks fund for years, but, you know, every year they'd ask for more money, and it, uh, after a while got pretty expensive. So, anyway, the, one of the pluses of going to selling safe and sane fireworks in Lompoc was the city would start a fund to help bring the fireworks back, and with the city contributions, we would do that. Now, the thirty percent, I, I don't know, I kind of think I'd like the whole thirty percent back. Uh, I know that if the city condemns a property for a purpose and in a certain period of time doesn't use that purpose, it reverts back to the person. So this money was taken to have a fireworks show or help pay the cost of fireworks shows that haven't been held. And, you know, there is another four percent that the city takes out of that, so they take actually thirty-four percent from us. And then don't forget the one or two, uh, percent sales tax that also comes back, so, uh, there, and, uh, it appears the city's just holding the money, so, uh, the others want a fifteen percent or something. I think the whole thing should be returned back to them. Actually, last couple of years, city come way better than we did. So, again, I'd like to see that, uh, that changed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Gloria Emery. I'm, I'm one of the members of the Cornerstone Church that we had the opportunity to do the fireworks this year. We have helped a few years ago with another church, and, um, we knew about the, which I thought was thirty-three percent plus four percent that they were taking. I believe that was still the thirty-three percent and four percent, and I understand the four percent. We, uh, this year, we did, we had the opportunity to, um, do the, the fireworks, and, um, it was, it was the thirty-three percent, but we had to, um, get security. We had to stay there, and, um, when you're there, I don't, I don't think you've ever, or everybody knows when you're there, in the evening time, you can get the homeless or whoever that's hovering around to see what you have, and really try to secure yourself there. So I, I do, um, I hurt for the ones that did get hurt or got, um, their stuff taken, but we had to hire. We had to, like I said, stay there, and, um, I don't think that if, if we didn't do that, then everything would have been taken. And, uh, I don't think it's fair that we, um, have to have that amount of finances come out, and when we're trying to do something for, um, our community as well, our church. And so, um, I would ask that, um, if you would be able to, um, lower that, that amount, even if it's the four percent, which I understand the four percent, because I think it was for the fire, um, fire department, but, um, but for everything else, you know, it is scary to be out there, and we're taking our time out to, um, to, to do, you know, this, this, um, event, which is the fireworks. And, um, I, so I, I, I feel that, um, I would be up, coming up here and asking that you would either reduce it, reduce it down. I think Santa Maria does ten percent, um, but at least, you know, we are a community. We are here to, you know, help, and, and I think if our city would be here for us citizens that, you know, that do these events, um, I think the safety part would be welcomed, and, and of course, the, the financial would be welcomed. Thank you.
Well, Mayor, um, City Council, I'm Pastor Dale Willis and Associate Pastor at Victory Outreach Church. Our pastor is here, our, our, uh, senior pastor is here, Pastor Jill. We just want to make a few comments. I don't want to repeat everything that's been said, um, but some new things to consider. The city benefits from the things that we do, the churches, the nonprofits, uh, all the things that are, that are done, um, and the city is not able to fund us in many ways, so it puts us in a position where we have to do things to raise funds. I think it's inappropriate for the city then to come and take thirty percent of the, those dollars. We spend all night, we stay in motorhomes or whatever case might be for security. We had a situation at our booth where someone shot a gun in the air. The bullet landed in a booth right next to some of the women. Fortunately, they didn't get hurt, uh, but many sacrifices are made to sell the fireworks so that we could do things that we believe the community benefits from. And, uh, and so to take thirty percent on top of the four percent and the two percent, four percent and two percent, I think is appropriate, but I think thirty percent is a bit much.
Good evening. My name's Leanne Wooliver, and, um, basically, I'm going to be talking about what I've talked about last time, but it is important as a city council representing the people of Lompoc that a forensic audit, audit on the budget be done as soon as possible. I'm not sure why this has been hard for the city to do, but I want to encourage you that this is one of the fundamental things you are required to do as an elected official. I want to talk to the mayor directly. Apparently, you are the one stopping the audit, from what I can gather. Why? Do you feel answering the citizens of the Lompoc Valley is not important, important enough? Some of the community think you're hiding some type of corruption that you don't want exposed? Hopefully, that is not true. I want to encourage all of you, as elected by the Lompoc Valley residents, want a forensic audit. Please do what is right. Again, you have taken an oath of office stating you will follow the U.S. Constitution and take care of the Lompoc Valley residents for domestic violence. Crime is hitting our valley in so many ways. Theft of vehicles is becoming a real problem here. The Lompoc Valley residents are crying for your help. Please, please. The last thing I want to say is I'm also asking that the city council end the contract for Visit Lompoc LLC, who Gilda Cordova is the president of, or Ms. Cordova needs to step down from the city council because of this conflict of interest that is going on. Thank you.
My name is Sheri Foster. I've been a member of this community for twenty-one years. The Epoch Times Supreme Court agrees with California voters on affirmative action. July ninth, two thousand twenty-three, Progressive California Governor Herem Johnson in his nineteen-eleven inaugural address stated, "The initiative system has justified itself again." Governor Newsom says, "Our campus doors will be open to those who want to work hard on commitment to diversity, equity, and equal opportunity," and it has never been stronger. Oddly, I stopped short at Governor Newsom's statement due to his poor choice of word usage in the word equity and equal opportunity. Equal, equity has many definitions with equate to monetary value. We, the people, are not for sale. We are here to ensure we all have equality. An opportunity does not have any guarantee or assurance. You will receive the benefits of the opportunity. Racial discrimination is the unfavorable treatment of people because of their race, prejudice, and discrimination can be directed at traits other than race, including sexual orientation, age, gender, ethnicity, religion, and national origins. Discrimination based on any of these can be a violation of law or policy. A prevalent, almost invisible kind of racism is institutional or structural racism, an unequal treatment that arises from the way organizations, institutions, antisocial systems operate. The people who work within such systems may or may not be racially prejudiced, but the systems themselves cause racial discrimination and inequality. Respect for persons and justices are two fundamental moral principles. Respect states that each person has equal inherent value regardless of social status, power, prestige, and racial and ethnic identity. We fail to respect people if we inhibit their freedom of choice, speech, or action, violate rights, coerce, or enslave them, discriminate against them, or use them to achieve an end that is not their own. Justice says that equals must be treated equally and fairly. This is that people must be treated the same unless there is morally relevant difference between them, and they must get what is due to them. Thank you for serving.
Hi, good evening. My name is Katie Kidman, and I'm pretty new to the Lompoc community since around two thousand twenty-two. And on July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, I was unlawfully arrested on a public sidewalk at the Lompoc Unified School District while practicing my First Amendment rights of the United States Constitution and redressing my government. As an investigative reporter gathering content for a story I was working on to publish on a public platform, I was taken into custody, booked into the Lompoc, Lompoc Police Department, and transferred to the Santa Barbara County Jail. I spent another two days and nights in jail with no food, water, blanket, or pillow, when I was released as a person that is disabled with no transportation, no money, no way home, no phone, and had to retrieve my bus, bus token from an office in another location. I had to go downtown Santa Barbara to catch a bus back to Lompoc, about a fifty-minute drive that dropped me off behind the Chamber of Commerce building over here, and I had to walk back to the Lompoc Unified School District to pick up my vehicle. As a sixty-three-year-old disabled grandmother, that is unheard of. None of this should have happened to me or any other American citizen. This is happening every day to other Americans. I filed several FOIA requests and several complaints against these officers who arrested me. Does it bother any of you that I have not received one response from any law enforcement officer or clerk of your courts to my request? The time and effort and taxpayer money it costs to pursue the frivolous charges is morally unethical, considering it is paid by the taxpayers' money. These malicious prosecutions encroach upon our U.S. constitutional rights. My First Amendment rights are being violated as I speak, since I am not able to unload, upload media to my YouTube channel or any other internet platform to comply with your terms of probation. I equate this with affirmative action and discrimination against me and those who are arrested after me for misdemeanors that are not considered criminal or a felony. Law enforcement should be focused on those who do commit crimes against children, crimes against humanity, or running rampant across California and the nation. We, the people, are watching it all happen, and it is our due diligence to ensure that you stay accountable and follow the U.S. Constitution, Article Six, which stipulates it is the supreme law over this land. Thank you for your service.
Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, my name is Sarah Gumaire, and I'm a business owner in town, and last month, my husband spoke about the homeless problem in Lompoc. The mayor responded that her hands were tied due to the Ninth Circuit, and for the community, I want to provide a little bit of background. The court ruled in two thousand eighteen that homeless persons cannot be punished for sleeping outside on public property. In the absence of adequate alternatives, enforcing anti-camping ordinances against individuals experiencing homelessness violates the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution. In other words, finding a place to sleep is not a crime when you have no other alternative, and the Eighth Amendment protects you from cruel and unusual punishment. The ruling additionally stated that until cities address the homelessness problem, they cannot send police officers or other authorities to remove the unhoused population from the city streets. So my problem is that the court gave you an out. The court stated, "So long as there are greater number of homeless individuals than the number of available beds, the jurisdiction cannot prosecute homeless individuals for involuntarily sitting, lying, or sleeping in public." If you have three hundred homeless people and three hundred and one beds, you are no longer at the mercy of the Ninth Circuit. Your hands are no longer tied. You can start getting in front of the problem and taking control back in your city, and this is a function of lead, leadership. This is the ultimate function of leadership. And so my question to the council, although rhetorical, is why? Why since two thousand eighteen, five years ago, have we not gotten front of the problem? Why have we allowed the homeless population to rise to numbers that make it unsafe for most citizens in this town? Why, when given the alternative, have we allowed people to pollute our water table and threaten the safety of our community? With the massive amounts of empty buildings in Lompoc and the millions of dollars being poured in from the state, why don't we have more shelter beds? Why can't we enforce that law? I and many other citizens are asking for transparency, information, and action. I would like a monthly report that shows how many homeless people we have in Lompoc. I would like to see that number go down month after month. We would like to see the city have a plan to create more shelter beds. We want our city attorney to join the numerous other city attorneys who are pe, who are appealing the Ninth Circuit. Please pressure the Ninth Circuit, forcing the issue to the Supreme Court. Can we please enforce the laws regarding public intoxication? Can we please aggressively remove homeless people from private property like our shopping centers? Can we address the egregious trash issue in this town? Can we please enforce prohibited storm drain violations? And without question, we need to defend our riverbed, and this protects our most valuable resource of clean water. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Todd Ranny, a local business owner and lifeline, lifetime resident of Lompoc. Um, I'm here also to support the, uh, address with the homeless issue. In two thousand twenty-one, the city adopted a resolution to address- In 2021, the city adopted a resolution to address the homeless issue. This plan, in conjunction with Santa Barbara County, comprised of two phases. But why weren't more shelter beds created? Perhaps there is more resolution and efforts that were done, but we will never get around that Ninth Circuit ruling without more shelter beds. In 2017, Lompoc had 56 shelter beds. In 2018, the decision by the Ninth Circuit stated that without adequate shelter beds, a jurisdiction could not criminalize homelessness. So you would think by 2023, we would have more beds. In 2023, we still only have 56 year-round emergency shelter beds and only 300 homeless people. Los Angeles has approximately 75,000 homeless people. I would say Los Angeles's hands are tied. That is simply a daunting task for them. If we had increased their shelter beds by just 50 years since 2017, we would be far ahead of the problem. Also, by housing people experiencing homelessness in emergency shelters, we would be able to reunite them with families and get them access to medical, educational, and job training. We would not have the environmental disaster of our riverbed. We must come up with a creative and lasting solution stating that our hands are tied is unacceptable response. We have numerous vacant commercial properties in Lompoc. Throughout the state, cities are looking at commercial properties as a solution to the housing needs of the homeless. I ask the city, have you considered commercial properties as a solution to the homelessness? Have you approached owners of the properties to ask if they're willing to help? Could we incentivize these owners to build temporary shelters, wrap on nonprofit organization around the logistics? Could the planning department fast-track some conditional use permits and get these shelters up and running quickly? The state allocated $1 billion in 2023 to solve the homeless problem. I know we can access some of those funds. Many small towns across the United States have gotten in front of the problem. Lompoc acted like we were a big city with their hands tied, but in comparison, a relatively minor issue to solve. There's no need to look backward or assign blame. The most successful cities across the globe are adopting Housing First approach to their homeless issue, adequate shelters without restrictions on sobriety and other limiting factors. Once the shelters are in place, you can relocate the folks to a safe indoor environment. At this point, you are now compliant with the Ninth Circuit ruling. You no longer impose selective enforcement on the rule of law, and the community safely can again be a priority. From there, this small town on the California coast once again can flourish instead of leaving in droves. They will flock here and thrive. Thank you.
Hello, I just wanted to, my name is Marcia Wertz, and I just wanted to draw attention to something that I guess I must have overlooked it on utility billing. There was a late, like I had a late payment or a bill that was late. And so in previous years, if that ever happened, I noticed there was, there would be a percentage of, I think it was 1%, like a 1% late fee. However, recently, apparently, the city had changed the policy to increase to either be the 1% or the $10 or a $10 flat fee, whichever is the greatest, or the greater amount, rather. So I'm just requesting that the city reinstate the 1%, the lesser, like flip that back and just have the, because if someone is perhaps late with their utility payment, they might just be having to juggle that payment with another, with some other payments, for example, and do like an every other payment or something like that. So it just would be my request that the city reconsider reducing, swapping that to the lesser amount for the citizens of Lompoc, because this, I imagine, could be affecting a number of people, and every dollar, actually, every penny these days does count with the cost of increase in living cost. Thank you so much.
All right, seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we will close oral communications and bring it back to the agenda. The next item on the agenda is designation of voting delegate and alternate for League of California City's annual conference. Every year, the City of Lompoc, which is members of the League of California City, attends the conference. I plan to attend this year. I know I've spoken with the city manager, and he plans to attend. Do any of our other council members plan to attend? Councilmember Starbuck?
I nominate Mayor Osborne.
Second.
You also need an alternate.
City manager.
So your motion is myself as the delegate and city manager as the alternate?
Yes.
And that's an amendment to the second, a second to the amendment?
Yes.
Awesome, okay. Any other discussion or questions? Are you sure you're not going? Okay, then let's vote. And that passes 4-0. Thank you. All right, the next item is introduction of ordinance number 170723 to prohibit overnight parking of recreational vehicles citywide and to create a recreational vehicle parking permit program. We have our city manager, Mr. Albro, and our city attorney, Mr. Malave, to make the presentation. And for those of you in the lobby that were interested in how we're tackling the homeless issue, this is one of those items, and so it would be great if you remained and participated in the presentation and the discussion. I tried.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is an ordinance tonight regarding recreational vehicle parking in the city. This is being brought forward because the city currently does not have any regulations for parking specifically aimed at recreational vehicles. Staff has noted that that has resulted in a number of public nuisance issues on our streets and alleys in town, including the dumping of sewage and other harmful substances onto city streets and the proliferation of trash on city streets and alleys that notably is near RVs that are parked there. And this is due to the unique characteristics of RVs, different than other vehicles. RVs are specifically intended for habitation, including cooking and bathing, and many contain bathrooms. And so as a result, that can result in dangerous and polluting materials and wastes being stored on RVs that then are more likely to be disposed of on city streets and alleys. Also, the amount of household trash that can be stored in RVs has the same ability to be disposed of on city streets and alleys. So there are differences between RVs and other types of regular vehicles, if you will. RVs are also larger, of course, than regular vehicles and longer, so when they are parked on the street, they take up more space than what a regular vehicle would take up, and that can create issues with parking demand and availability of parking spaces in the city, further giving rise to the justification for regulating the parking of RVs differently than we might regulate the parking of other regular types of vehicles. So the proposed ordinance that we have before you tonight seeks to address these concerns. State law in the Vehicle Code, Section 22507, allows the city to prohibit the parking of all vehicles or certain types of vehicles on city streets and to establish parking regulations on city streets. State law, that same section, also allows the city to create a permit parking program where residents who live along, adjacent to city streets, if we create a permit program, will be allowed to come to the city and apply for a permit that will allow them to park their RV on the street, when a RV without a permit would not be allowed. So what this proposed ordinance does is it prohibits the parking of all recreational vehicles on all city streets between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., so overnight, unless the owner of the RV obtains a parking permit from the city. And then if they are displaying the permit, they will be exempt from the prohibition on overnight parking. There's going to be two types of permits that the ordinance would create. One is a general RV parking permit that would be available to any person who is a resident of Lompoc. That permit would last for two years, and it can be successively renewed. And then there would also be an RV guest parking permit that a city resident could obtain from the city for a period of two weeks if they wanted to have a guest who is visiting them in an RV park on the street on that city resident's street. The proposed fee for this permit is $55 per permit, and that'd be the same fee whether it's a general RV permit for a city resident or a RV guest permit. That's going to be, that's tentative at this point, but it is based on a calculation that our city staff did. It does not exceed the city's costs of administering the permit program. So $55 was what was tentatively proposed. The residents of the city will be allowed to have only one permit per household and one guest permit per household at a time. And then you'd be limited in the number of guest permits that you can receive per any 12-month period. So guest permits last for two weeks if you want to have a permit for a guest, and you would not be allowed to have a guest permit for more than 60 days in a 12-month period. I'd also like to point out that there is a typo in the ordinance on Section G, which is the third last page of this staff report item. Section G3C is missing a word at the end. Needs to have the word vehicles added to the end. That's, what that's saying is you cannot get a permit if you want to get a permit for a street where all vehicle parking is prohibited. You cannot get a.
Jeff, could you clarify too? Is it one year or two year? I know I initially started with two, but I thought we had the ordinance at one. I don't know where that is. I was trying to find it.
Let me see. I think you might be right about that. You're right. So the general RV parking permits are valid for one year. That's what's proposed in this ordinance. Of course, that's up to the city council discretion tonight, but what's proposed in the ordinance is for one year, and then the guest permits are for two weeks. So the staff recommendation is for the city council to introduce this ordinance tonight, and I am available for any questions that the council may have.
Councilmember Ball.
Couple of questions. One is a quick one. Under Exhibit A, definitions, it still says two-year under RV parking permit. Am I looking at the wrong document? Right after the signature. Down the last RV parking.
You're right. So it did, so I apologize about that. Our original draft had a two-year time period, but then in discussing with staff, we decided to reduce that to one year, and we changed it in the operative part of the ordinance, but I guess we didn't change it in that definition. So let's do another typo correction and have that definition say one year, and I appreciate you pointing that out.
Yeah, no stress. And then just a couple of questions for clarification. Again, this is to address those that are, many would consider illegally parking RVs around, but we're also imposing a fee upon residents who may own RV and want to park it on the street. First question is, getting down to the nitty-gritty details, somebody owns an RV, gets a permit to park it on their street, can they park it in front of their neighbor's house and then say, "I have a permit"? How does that?
That's a good question, and that is something that cities that have these type of ordinances have to decide how they're going to have that operate. So what the current proposed ordinance says is that if you get a regular RV parking permit, you can park it anywhere on the street that you live on. So it doesn't have to be in front of your house. It can be anywhere on the street that you live on, on your block. So it can't be on the next block, but it has to be on your block.
So I guess the reason I'm pointing that out is most folks know they don't necessarily own the parking space or the street, but a lot of people feel that they do, and I can just imagine someone saying, "Someone parked their RV in front, and we have to go and say, 'Oh, they're permitted.'" So I want to make sure that we've got some contingency plans for some of those nuanced issues.
So that, it is, it's a real issue. The other option, that's what the council could do if you wanted, is to say that it has to be parked in front of your house, but then that gets into issues if some people do not have sufficient curb line in front of their house, and so they're then not able to have an RV, essentially, if they don't have room to park it on their lot. So I think the thought was we would try this idea where you can park it on your street, since right now it's allowed to park anywhere. We would try this idea to park it on your block and then see how that works, and if it's a problem, we could come back.
Well, I definitely feel we need to do something. We need as many tools in our tool belt to address some of these issues, but I hope that we pay attention to some of those unintended consequences and we don't create a bigger challenge to have to clean up afterwards. So that's the first thing. And then the other thing, obviously, it's a very sensitive subject. There's a lot of people that are involved in criminal elements and stuff and the unhoused and the RV population, but there are some that aren't, that are just, they're trying to abide by the laws that will be affected by this and have to make different plans. My main question is, as a city, trying to keep our legal parameters in focus, how do we avoid tiptoeing up to lawsuit territory when it comes to discriminating against a big group of people? But other cities have been hesitant to do something like this.
Well, I would say that this is not an ordinance that discriminates or distinguishes based on the owner of the RV. This is, this is a parking regulation that applies to any RV that's parked on city streets regardless of the status or the, regardless of the status of the person who owns the RV.
Yeah, I appreciate that. There are definitely some that would disagree, that those that are living in RVs are probably in a class of their own and sometimes might be discriminated against by actions, but I disagree.
Well, this applies to people who, to RVs with people living in them or RVs with no one living in them, same way?
I definitely appreciate that clarity. Thank you. I think that's all the questions that I had. Thank you.
Sure. For the clarification, for those that are living in their RVs, the fact that we have a safe parking ordinance and that we have a partner in New Beginnings that will assist you if you're living in your RV or your vehicle is part of a proactive plan in response to those that are concerned about those it might impact? And that assists us with some of that potential legal gray area, correct?
True.
Councilmember Vega.
Jeff, this ordinance is being created by the people that are noncompliant, correct? I mean, because of the noncompliance of other people that are just parking anywhere? I understand that. So the action plan behind this is what? Because if there's no action plan, we have numerous ordinances that are unenforceable or which, as Councilmember Ball has mentioned, the laws are against us or litigation-wise, you know, that's why you're here, to make sure we're not sued. So what action plan can you tell me is going to be in place or is that not your realm? Because what happens is we have an ordinance that says no parking from 10:00 to 6:00 a.m., so if someone's sleeping or whatever, and they're using it as their residence and they're illegal, or they're as far as no licensing, or they just have been a health hazard for many, I understand sometimes you can't do anything if they're occupying this vehicle, so how do we get around that?
Well, again, this is a parking regulation, so it has nothing, it doesn't matter whether someone is in the vehicle when we try to enforce it or not in the vehicle when we try to enforce it. We're going to enforce it in the same way that we would enforce any other parking regulation.
So if someone's inside the vehicle, is my question?
Someone's inside the vehicle.
Do we tow a vehicle away when someone's occupying any vehicle, whether it's a car, truck, RV? truck, RV?
Well, I'd probably call on the chief to answer that question.
It's just a question, you know?
But I believe that our police department attempts to have the person exit the vehicle before it is towed.
I got you.
If they do not exit the vehicle, then, then...
But, you know, under the current laws, the way we have heard, under private property laws, that's what we hear sometimes with the shopping centers and things like that. So maybe, say if we're going to put some teeth into it, let's find out what the teeth are. Or do we only have one tooth?
I'll let the chief speak to that.
Mayor, Council. This isn't the first time this topic has come up. We've actually dealt with this in the city before, and we use all our resources to get these people help and get them where they need to be. In situations where people don't want to exit the vehicle, we, we address it appropriately. And, you know, there have been times where we've had to escalate it and rise it to a level, it wasn't our choice, it was theirs. And if we have to, if we have to take it to that level, we do everything we can to avoid This is something that the community needs. Like the city attorney has said, it really doesn't matter if you're in the vehicle or not. It's really about being permitted to have the vehicle on your block or in front of your residence. It's time for something like this. What we will do is obviously, customer service-based, we'll give people warnings ahead of time. We'll say, "Hey, look, the City Council passed this ordinance. You're in violation of it. Let's get this resolved without having to take it to the next level." But if we are going to continue to have problems with those same vehicles, then we'll start enforcing the infraction and inciting people. And then eventually, if it rises to a certain level and is continuous, then, you know, the vehicle may get towed. The towing probably won't happen in the middle of the night because we don't have a contract with a tow company to be able to do that in the middle of the night. We could research that and see if we can get one in place. My guess is that it'll be reported. We'll keep track of who we've warned and shared with that they need to move the vehicle or get permitted. And if they don't rise to that level, then we'll tow it the following day. That would be my initial expectation for staff, but we, we still have to do a lot of thought on this and work for it.
You know, chief, I appreciate your response. As you know, this is another tool for you, and I get it. But I think that this is probably a tool more for New Beginnings and the parking situation because I think that by creating this ordinance, you also have an idea what you're going to do about it already. I don't think it was just a half-baked idea that, so we do have New Beginnings who had a safe parking program, so let's be clear here. Are they going to be towed to a safe parking area or is the police just going to enforce, like I say, it's, it's a vehicle that's unregistered? Because, you know, the word on the street is sometimes it's a, it's an iffy thing whether anything's done about it. Right now, we do have people that are, I mean, it's, it's just, you know, it's a health hazard probably. I should put it that way. So again, creating laws that are going to be unenforceable is kind of where my question is, okay?
This is a completely enforceable infraction that we will take action on. I have no relationship or agreement with safe parking in any way, shape, or form.
Okay.
I don't. And whether that vehicle gets permitted or whether it gets towed is the choice that the owner makes.
Yeah, and the reason is I'm, I understand the ordinance and the, and the proposal here because we need to clean up our streets, we need to give you more tools to utilize. I'm just afraid, you know, we make rules for the bad people, or for the good people so that the bad people can have something enforced upon them, you know, just like a permit process, you know, for a yearly permit for the RVs and stuff like that. You know what I mean? So we have to ask these questions. You know, if you had an RV on the street, now you have to go get a permit because that's the only way we can enforce the people that are there with unregistered vehicles on the street. And it's good that you point out that we don't have an agreement after nine o'clock or ten o'clock for a towing company. We should know these things because at least people that are going to call late at night and you guys think that something's going to be done, that's why we put hours on it. So I'm not sure why the hours are even there. If we don't have any kind of tools to take care of a problem after hours, not that I want the police department to be over here on graveyard shift, you know, doing towing vehicles or anything, but, you know.
Well, I think the, the idea between, between ten and six is to give the RV owners the opportunity to park anywhere they need to within the city instead of just banning RV parking on the city streets. That creates a problem for anybody that's doing business in an area where they can't park on private property to do that business. Towing vehicles is something that we do because this is a new ordinance that, that you're going to be making a decision on. Once that decision is made, then we'll do additional research and reach out to the tow companies to see who might be interested in towing after-hours RVs. It can be difficult, but that's money that they can potentially make if we have to tow. So again, you know, like anything else that's new, we're going to continue to warn and give those warnings until it gets to the point where the warnings just aren't working. It's like, "You need a permit or else you're going to get cited." And if you don't get it taken care of, then we potentially could tow the vehicle.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate that.
My next question for Jeff. I might have a question for the chief. I don't want to make him mark all the way back. Thank you.
Stay close back.
Stay close. Is this still my turn?
Yes.
Just kidding. Just kidding. So again, my take on this for the people that are doing the right thing, I think the permit process should be two years instead of imposing the one year. I'm just going to make my comment here. And the fee is subjective, you know? We're doing things based on cost recovery and, and that doesn't fly with me. I think the city's open to accommodate people that are paying taxes already and everything. I think the fee should be looked at a little different. The fifty-five dollars is probably just pie in the sky. Let's look at something that's a little bit more even-numbered so that it doesn't feel like we're trying to penalize the people that are good. I get it. There's a cost for creating the permit and for administering it, and hopefully it'll be without any pain to get a permit instead of standing in line or whatever. You know, hopefully we have a process there that's easy. I think we should take a look at that and see what we can do.
It, it's within the Council's discretion to charge any fee that you would like below fifty-five. Fifty-five is, would be the max.
Yeah, thank you. And I don't, I don't agree with the hundred percent cost recovery. I mean, people are taxpayers. They've been here, they live in the city, they're always paying. City Hall is always going to run, so let's look at another fee that's actually something that's not based on a calculation that someone made up. So thank you.
Councilmember Ball.
So in some ways, I, I definitely agree on the permit fee side of things. I don't mind where it's at. My biggest fear is someone saying after a year or two, "I pay my fee. I got my permit." And they didn't do anything. So I paid more in and my city still looks the same. Obviously, we're hopeful that will change, but that's a big concern for me. And again, just to use it as a, you know, somewhat of a visual metaphor, look, good intentions are one thing, but we have lots of signs, antique signs all over Lompoc that say, "A thousand dollar fine for littering," and you can easily find trash. So a sign or an ordinance is only as strong as our ability to enforce it and sustain that enforcement. So I guess my specific question back to the chief is, we want to get behind this. We want to make sure that you, you know, potentially have the resources. I don't think, you know, necessarily patrol officers need to be out doing this job all the time, but I don't think there's only a few RVs out there. It's a big issue. So to show change, to show our community that it's worth investing in this program because we're making a difference, I'm sure you guys have some rough numbers on what the need is and what the overwhelming number of people you've got to communicate with. So I'm just curious, do you have enough resources to take this on? And are there different plans to adapt with what you have to make it happen?
Yeah, I, I think once we educate the staff as to what the ordinance is and what the expectation of that ordinance is, that, that there'll be, there'll be eyes watching out for those things. We have the community service officers who currently do most of the towing in the city, and they've towed a tremendous number of vehicles that have been in violation of not only municipal code but state code as well. So this would just be another tool for us to watch out for and to mark and then to put a list together so that it can be addressed. Like I said, I don't expect any towing to happen in, in the middle of the night, but those officers at three o'clock in the morning as they're driving around the city notices that there's a vehicle parked in front of a residence, sees that there's no permit attached to it, can put that information out to a CSO who can address it in the next morning or a police officer for that matter the next morning. And then we can address it that way.
I appreciate that. And again, I, I hope you'll share with us as the need evolves, that we have a plan in place to not only just sustain it and help out for this two-year budget, but if it's an ongoing obligation of service to our constituents in the city, we have a plan to make sure that we're staffed up and that we're supporting your efforts to do so. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Vega.
Chief, that was a great point you made about the community service officers. Okay, I wasn't trying to throw an arrow at you, but you know what I mean? That's a great point that we do have another resource here so the community knows there's other people watching out for these kind of things. And I guess they have the ability to ticket and call the tow truck, right? Is that correct?
They do. Yeah, that's currently what, we're down one CSO right now because CSO Quavis is in the police academy or second week to become a police officer.
Oh, wow. How about that? That's great.
So, so we're going to be recruiting for the, the second CSO position, but the CSO do a brunt of the towing and addressing abandoned vehicles and anything that's in violation and getting them off the street to keep the, the streets looking good. So this would be something that would just fall in line with a lot of the duties that they currently have, and would, we'd be able to track those and mark those vehicles to see, you know, have they moved? Do they have a permit? And some of the stuff that we currently do today.
I got you. But that's great. That was a great point because I don't want everybody throwing an arrow just at you guys, okay? But the tow truck thing was a good, is something food for thought. You know what I mean? It's kind of, we have an ordinance that has a buffer zone which basically is a free space and this kind of hole in the bucket. So we need to maybe just take another look at this. Thank you.
Councilmember Ball.
Just, just real quickly, just as a suggestion, and again, I'm, I'm hopeful you'll take it seriously, but, you know, a few of us up here believe strongly in the idea at least of New Beginnings. And again, I'm not asking that the police department work with them specifically and transfer and educate and do all of that, but maybe look into it as a resource so that when or if there are occasions where staff comes across somebody that isn't really, you know, other than just parking at the wrong place at the right, wrong time, they're following every other rule, and maybe they're in that population that could benefit from that safety. I just hope that you'll consider them as a viable, helpful option.
Absolutely. And I, I would love for the public to understand when we're addressing homeless in the community, it's not like, "Get out or else." We're usually working in partnership with Good Sam and all the other resources to give these people options and to take paths on, by their own choice in a lot of cases. And unfortunately, not everybody engages with those other entities to, to better themselves. And that's when we have to take some type of police action. But our, our, our first goal is never to come in and say, "You're out and/or you're going to jail." We will never do that. Our goal is to get people into a better life, whatever that may be and whatever path that may take. So if it's a quick phone call to get to safe parking because these people actually fit that need and, and can fit their conditions, then absolutely, we'll make that phone call. But, you know, we always, always try to get them the resources that they need when we're out there dealing with the homeless.
All right, seeing no further questions for staff, we'll go to public comment on this item. If you would like to speak to Item sixteen, you're more than welcome to come to the podium for three minutes, or you may call in at eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one.
Hello, Carl Jones, citizen. Applaud that you're addressing it. Good thing. I don't agree with a one-year permit. It, fifty-five dollars for a one-year, two-year, cheaper than storage. You know how many RVs are going to end up in the streets of Lompoc? And that's going to cause parking problems? That's going to cause visual problems when you're going around corners? I would limit it to the two-week timeframe, enough time for a visitor to come, but to tell me that I can pay fifty-five dollars to put my RV in front of my house and take it out of that hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar storage place, that's where I'm putting it, and I don't care whose cars are out in front of mine, could be the neighbor's kids, because that's just going to push all them cars down the street and coming around some of these blocks out here just with the cars that you can't see when going around a corner. Now you're going to have RVs. So my personal opinion, get rid of that one-year plan. Put it as, okay, you have, you can have it there, turn visitation, because that's all you're going to do is turn all the streets of Lompoc into RV storage. So I really don't agree with that portion of it. I do also prefer that it should be in front of your residence. And also, what are you going to do about all these people out here in these apartments? What about the ones over here in these RV parks? And, you know, especially those ones here on, on Eighth Street, you've got all those apartments down there. Does every person in every apartment have the right to ask for a permit? And that's going to align ocean RVs. I mean, I understand that, that it's, it's a good that you're addressing it, but there's a lot of this stuff we need to look at before you enact this ordinance that we may not have looked at or thought of. Because I'm telling, I'm telling you right now, I would have kept my RV for fifty-five dollars a year. I'd put it right in front of my house. And all them people that usually park on my public street, hey, take it down the road. That's now my spot. But that's, that's the truth of the matter. That's what will happen, especially in today's area where everybody's trying to save money. You know, everyone they like, hey, put it in front of their house, fifty-five dollars, not a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a month. That's the truth of the matter. So thank you.
Phil Skyler, Lompoc Council Mayor. First comment would be on the ordinance itself. Item one C says it's a particular concern because they have potential to threaten the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Lompoc. It sounds to me that it might be a health issue of having these motorhomes on the street, correct? Well, let's go down to Section two, environmental review. It says, "No results to direct a physical change." Oh, wait a minute. You're telling me up here it's a concern of the community, but yet it's exempt from Basically, I'm against this. It's selective enforcement. I mean, I can take a van, hook a hole in it, and live in it, and dump out the hole and move on. You're taking a shot at RVs. I think it's, it's selective enforcement, in my opinion. I disagree with the city attorney. Now I want to go to the exhibit itself. Councilmember Ball, you caught the one and two-year thing, so I'll have to take that And you did catch the vehicles, okay. So I think that was my, then again, on the ordinance, it would be under parking permits. I, three, the committee shall have the right to appeal the notice of redification in accordance with the procedures of Chapter one point thirty-two of the code, except that the appeal shall be to the city manager with no right of review to the city council. I think that's wrong. You represent us, the people. Thank you.
I, I just, having learned about this ordinance and this proposed issue that's been raised tonight about you guys voting on it, I strongly oppose this particular ordinance. I think it's just basically the city of Lompoc kind of saying, "Hey, we're going to, we're just going to really control how many, what you own. You can only own one motor, you know, motor vehicle or one motor home or whatever it is." It's just, it's just kind of, I think it, I'm just looking at it as a way of to just get more money from people and the residents. And also, what about, it's like, it's not at all welcoming. It's, we're, we're trying to welcome people to the community, and there are people that just, they might rent a camper and come driving, you know, through the state and be like, "Hey, let's go to Lompoc, the city of flowers, and go to the arts festival and just park there." And, you know, maybe they get into town really late at night and they're coming in for a festival or something to go wine tasting, and they just park where it's convenient. It's the middle of the night and they don't, they might not know about some arbitrary ordinance, which is, you know, just, and they'll, they could be ticketed or, you know, get a knock at their door and the police department, you know, says, "Hey, hey, you guys are parked unlawfully," or whatever. So I, I, I recognize that there, I also, I do agree and recognize that there are issues with, with recreational vehicles and campers just parked long-term. That's, it is a nuisance. It's very, there are safety issues, especially on, in my neighborhood, I'm on West Walnut, and I, there are vehicles that are parked really close to crosswalks, so it creates blind spots for, you know, people crossing the street. You can't, it's not easy, or try trying to drive and hit us, go to the stop sign. You can't see around the large... You can't see around the large vehicles. So I do recognize and feel that there should be some kind of, maybe just like a regulation where vehicles can be, like, just parked, like, let's say, like, maybe seven days or 10 days, and then they have to just be moved. And then, at that point, whether it's a seven-day or a 14-day, the vehicles need to be moved, or have the owners move their vehicle, or provide that opportunity for the residents to there, at that point in time, get a permit, if they need longer duration in that location. But to just, you know, kind of arbitrarily to start telling everyone, "Okay, that's it. You're just going to have to get a permit or move your vehicles off the street, or we're just going to get more money from everybody." It just seems very, and just one more way to extort money from the people that are the, you know, hard-working residents that already own their campers or trailers or whatnot. So in any case, I just, I like the idea of, or I ask that you consider just having some kind of regulation where vehicles have to be moved after that seven days or window of 10 days, and thereby, you know, that way things keep rotating and moving around. Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we'll bring it back to counsel for discussion. Counselor Member Starbuck.
This isn't the first time we brought this up. I've been on both sides of this over the years. Years ago, the parking program was suggested, and the council didn't want to go with it at that point. There was a different swing several years later of, you pay your registration, you're allowed to be on the street. That hasn't worked either. Basically, Lompoc has become the import center of county-not-wanted RVs. We see it, we all know. I don't want to use the word selective enforcement, but people that own RVs have been here and their neighbors, they agree, and there's not a neighborhood battle. There's not code enforcement fighting and all with this parking. The 72-hour rule would still be in effect. So there is a tool still to use on this. Like Mr. Jones said, I mean, yeah, is somebody going to pull theirs out of storage, and then every three days, their neighbor calls and says, "Mr. Jones hasn't moved his RV." Mr. Jones goes and moves it three feet. Well, you know, pretty soon, it's almost to the point where it's worth $125, so I don't have to go hook up and jerk my RV a few feet. What I feel bad about this is the fact that we're charging the people that aren't offending. Counselor Member Vega said it. We're charging the people that are within the rules and the law here. I totally think that we could do the waiver of the fee on this. We're talking minutes in this table for everybody, you know, 35-minute, five-minute, five-minute. Hell with it. Make it zero. Let them do it. It's time to do something. I appreciate Mr. Albro bringing it forward. You know, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. And if, I'd like to go ahead and make a move that we accept, ordinance 1707, parentheses 23, after Mr. Vega's comments.
Counselor Member Vega.
I'd like to make a substitute motion if that is a motion that's accepted. I think that we should bring this back with a couple of exceptions because someone did note some great points, okay? We have high-density areas here that probably shouldn't be included because of parking, you know, for RVs. Something needs to probably said, you know, if we have apartments or something, without discrimination, but there's a parking issue with some of these areas. So if you had 24 apartments, you had 24 RVs, would we have an issue that we created by saying it shouldn't be single fam, it should be single-family homes? I mean, that's something we need to look at. The fee does bother me, the fact that we have a fee and a penalty issue for people that haven't done anything wrong. I disagree with the, with the thought process that there's going to be motorhomes on the street, because they can park their motorhome on the street right now without penalty. So to say you're going to take them out of storage and just park them in the street? No, I don't agree with that. I think if you own a motorhome or some RV that's worth protecting and saving, that's why you put it out of harms' reach, and you put them in a storage area where you can go back and clean it, and it's secure. So I don't believe that people that have something that's worth something, that's a valuable asset, are going to do that, because they can do it now. So I think that we need to revisit this and have a couple of revisions brought back. To accept it as written, it's incomplete. We haven't addressed the high-density areas in the apartment. Maybe, you know, we're probably fabricating something that says, "Hey, if 10 people in 10 apartments get RVs, what's going to happen to the parking?" Okay? When we just voted this in, when we said it was okay. How do you tell people no? So there's something there that needs to be kind of adjusted. So my thing is to bring it back with a few adjustments. I have a couple more ideas and suggestions here on how we can make it better. I don't think, I think the fee's too high for, and I agree with Counselor Member Starbuck. The good people are, again, getting penalized again for, because of the other people, and it's a fee generation, and I don't agree with it. And I don't agree with cost recovery. So I'm not sure if that was a clear motion or not, but to bring it back is basically what I'm saying, with a couple of revisions from staff.
Do you have any questions on the motion, Madam Clerk?
What are the revisions you want?
Just as I stated, parking revisions, okay, for high-density areas, is this going to, is this same ordinance? Okay, I get it, Stacy, but to be clear. So would this ordinance be treated the same way in high-density areas? And Mr. Malawi?
Yes. It says, it says that a resident who lives on the street, so if there's an apartment building, then each resident in that apartment building could each have an RV permit, just like a single-family homeowner could have on a home of single-family, home, a street of single-family homes. I have some doubts about whether we could allow people who live in single-family homes to get a permit and people who live in apartments to not get a permit.
Got you.
I think there could be legal issues with that. The additional thing that I would say is, right now, currently, anyone who lives in an apartment building and owns an RV can park on their street. And I don't know that there is an issue with that currently, so I don't know if adopting the ordinance would create an issue.
Okay.
But if you'd like me to go back and look at the legal issue, I can. I just wanted to make those...
Well...
Oh, and then the fee, the fee, we can change tonight. We can make that part of the motion tonight.
See, the fee, it, but does, I'm on the same page as Counselor Member Starbuck as the fee. The tools, I understand the ordinance. So if the fee was an issue and the timeframe for the permit, two years, then I would be on board, to be honest with you. So it's up to Mr., Counselor Member Starbuck. He made the motion. Are you willing to alter it or not? You made a couple of...
So are you rescinding your motion and going back to a discussion of modifying?
Yes, I'd like to go back to a discussion.
So you're rescinding your motion?
I will.
Okay. And you're asking Counselor Member Starbuck to consider changes and amendments to his motion?
Yes, ma'am, because he said he disagreed with some of the issues, and then he said he made the motion to accept. So I don't understand that.
He made a motion to accept the proposed ordinance, but to waive the fee. That was his motion.
And if he would modify it to two years for the permit, I would be on board.
I truthfully don't have any issue with modifying it to two years. It's however, whatever, you know? The fee was the biggest thing with me.
So he's modified it with your request.
Yeah. And under those two conditions, sure, I'd give him a second.
Okay. Counselor Member Ball, before we go to a vote.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Maybe, you know, just the city, you know, obviously you can use some rationale and some reasoning for different things, try to stick it somewhere. What are some reasons why we went one year versus two years? And are there things that we're not thinking of that are pros and cons in that one, two-year discussion? Or is it just a roundup number?
Well, administration doesn't have a preference. From what I'm hearing, it was a comment that we got from the police department that a one-year might be better than a two-year. So I don't know if the police can speak to that. But I don't know if we have a strong preference as staff.
Okay. So something that, again, I appreciate, I can understand where you're coming from for waiving the fees, and look, this, as a city, we should try to get out and provide as much service as possible and show people that we're really trying. I think my only concern is, is that we don't have any sort of cost recovery, and bad times show up, and we had good intentions, but no money left to deal with that thing, so it falls on the pile of unenforceable. So I think there is reasonable, there's a reasonable, it's reasonable to ask for something, considering that it is going to be the buck stops at the city to implement this, and it's not going to be cheap in all contexts. So I'm a little bit torn. I wish we had a little bit more detail on some of the nuanced issues. I'll just say real quickly, I've had quite a few people reach out to me about the RV issue. I've had parents reach out to me about RVs parked next to Megalito School, and they don't feel safe having to park and walk past it. And so I've, look, I totally understand. I know it's going to be a complicated issue for many people here, and I'm really leaning on the police chief and anyone that comes into contact with these folks to be as kind and hospitable as possible. Something Mr. Jones brought up, it triggered a memory for me. I used to live on North G Street behind that old in Lompoc, and my mom had just purchased a shiny 1990 Toyota Camry, gray, five-speed. And the people at the end on Barton had parked their big RV right next to the corner. They were good neighbors. We still liked them. They're great people. But my mom couldn't see around, and she just went to turn left, and someone was going relatively fast, and it was my mom's fault because she didn't look, but that was specifically because it was hard to see around the corner. So again, I am hesitant, considering that what happens in some of these worst-case scenarios where we didn't really think through a few of these things, I just want us to be careful not to knee-jerk a reaction and not have a way to sustain it and not create a bigger pile of issues to have to clean up later. So I'd be interested in where the mayor lands on some of these things, so I'll stop talking.
Counselor Member Vega, do you have anything else to add before I say my piece?
Yeah, I do. I feel really strongly about the fact that we, I've agreed that I think that we need the tools in the toolbox, the waiving of the fees. As you guys know, we've had a budget that's been structured, and the residents of Lompoc that do pay their bills, we've had significant increases in all areas. I think at this point, since the ordinance has been created to take off the people that are non-compliant off the streets or put more restrictions on them, and we do have the CSOs and we have everything else, that's the least that we can do as far as consideration to say, so people can't say, "We're always being taxed. We always had our fee structures raised." I understand City Hall is here, but all we, it seems that the perception is that all we have done is raise things, and I would like to pass something back when we, so that it's not perceived as a penalty. I think that the cost recovery, the full-cost recovery that you've mentioned was something that was made up, okay? It's not really something that's structured that says we have to have full-cost recovery. I remember back when they started bringing back that rhetoric, acting like City Hall's not getting paid enough, so we're going to have full-cost recovery because of our time. City Hall is here because of the taxpayers, and they are here to make sure the city runs. They're here to actually give, serve the public. So full-cost recovery, where does that come from? If you could explain that to me, then I would understand it. But I'm just kind of mentioning that, that that's not how this works. Full-cost recovery was meant to generate income for other things that wasn't actually to help the public. It was there to generate income, to put back in the coffers of the city. So I'll just make my point. I'm still agree with the, but I wanted to exactly tell you, I've been here quite a few years, and I see what's happening. We need to give back something to show the public that we're not penalizing them for doing the right thing. Thank you.
I do appreciate those comments. I would ask you to consider that it will come back before us, that this council will be tasked with providing supplemental appropriations to make sure this program is sustainable. And if, at that time, we find out that it was because we waived the fee, and now it's on council to say yes or no, we can't afford it in some worst-case scenario, and we haven't put money into some place where we can make sure this sustains itself as a program, then I would just argue that we're shooting ourselves in the foot. But I can also see it your way, so.
Counselor Member Starbuck.
Yeah, real quick, before I call the vote on this, I'm just going to mention, we're talking about a CSO, five minutes. It'll take longer to distribute the funds than to pay the five-minute, $5.67 fee. And it goes right down the line here. $3.98 to this person, $5.57 to this person. By the time you divvy it, it's probably cost you $20 to do it. It's senseless. I'm going to call a vote.
All right. So there's been a call for a vote. I will hold back my comments till after we vote.
Before you do, can I just confirm? When you say waive the fee, you're going to keep the fee in the ordinance and waive it for everybody, or you're going to remove it from the ordinance?
The next clarity question for you, Mr. Starbuck.
I think we'll just remove it from the ordinance.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to make the permit free and for two years. All right. Ready to vote? And that fails 2-2. So to answer a few questions that are out there, we have individuals that I've spoken with who do pay their taxes, and they're upset that the public and those that have bought RVs, which are an extravagance, an addition, it's not your normal household, are parking for free on our city streets. And they would like to have their vision back, their street swept, and not have to have an RV parked in front of their house that they don't own. And a fee that is cost recovery, that is $50 for a year, we've heard from a citizen who pays storage for $125. So paying to store your vehicle on a public street that is a parking street, not a storage facility, isn't a huge burden for someone who has an additional vehicle, a recreational vehicle. These are not something that you buy because, you know, you don't have any extra money. Most people who have a RV, it's an additional cost. It's additional fuel. It's additional storage. It's additional upkeep above and beyond your driveway, your house, your yard. If you were like myself that lives in an HOA, there are limitations already. I cannot store my RV anywhere except on my private property, and I can only park it in front of my home for loading and unloading purposes. And so I live within the city that has, and a portion of the city has extended rules, and I pay into an HOA fee that enforces that. So cost recovery is literally a way to make sure we are funding what we want enforced. Otherwise, you're asking our overburdened police department to function on the budget that is being paid by the taxpayers, to look at something very specifically that is impacting certain neighborhoods and certain areas. I personally think that it's not a huge fee, that $55 for a year is reasonable. I think we could modify it, instead of saying anywhere on the block, saying within 100 feet of your house, for those that are impacted by it, is reasonable, and that this would empower the department to then go out and look at a contract to potentially enforce it if they need to, and they'd have the resources and wouldn't take away resources from other things that we're expecting them to do with the funds that we do collect for taxes. So I would substitute a motion that we leave it at a year, that we leave it at $55, and that we modify it to parking within 100 feet of your home. So that would be my substitute motion. Counselor Member Ball.
So I just, I might put my foot on, in my mouth on this one, but I'm hopeful that this council can avoid division on this and find a sweet spot if there is the mayor at all open to a reduction in the fee to potentially meet in the middle on this with the two dissenting council members on this.
It depends on how much you're lowering it. I don't, I don't want it, I don't want it to go so low that you actually do potentially create what a citizen said.
We're already doing that at 55.
At 55, I know. But at some point, there needs to be a balance between it all. And I actually do understand cost recovery and do respect the process. So I don't want to say that it's not valid, but, you know, it's not at the full rate of any one of those individuals. So I, you know, if you... individuals. So, you know, if you have a proposal, I'm willing to consider it.
So let's just go this way. I think at the moment, I'll, I'm going to second your motion. I'm just going to say, it doesn't cost nothing to do hard work. It costs something. So when we hear numbers, it's $3 for this and whatever, yes, every little bit of effort, we pay people to do here in the city, so it does add up. So it is fair for us to talk about how much it's going to cost. And if we don't talk about how much it's going to cost, we're going to talk about in four or five years when we have to get rid of it because we can't afford it. And this tends to be a cycle that Alonpoke is familiar with. So I will second that motion as is.
Okay. Councilmember Vega and then Councilmember Staubach.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to your substitute motion.
Well, mine's not a substitute motion. The other motion failed, so mine's a motion, but you'd like to make a substitute motion.
That's correct, okay?
Yep.
And I should be able to do that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. I disagree with your explanation of cost recovery, okay? That was a rhetoric that was created. And it really does, is not a legal term, and it's not here, and I don't, I don't believe the city attorney can say that's something that we have as a guideline for the city. I think meeting in the middle is more important than arguing about terminology. But I think the two years for the $55 would sit better for me, okay? If we have to do any kind of charging. I just don't want to call cost recovery because we're here, we're here to serve the public. Some people, they think that we're here to charge them more and, and, and just create income because all we seem to be doing is increasing budgets and increasing fees, okay, for support of City Hall. And I get it. But where's the support for the city, for the residents of the city? The rhetoric of motorhomes everywhere and all this sitting that we pay DMV fees to park in the streets. If you choose to live in an HOA, that's your choice, okay? And you may not agree because you won't.
We, as a city, don't receive that DMV fee.
No, the residents pay for it. The residents pay for it, the right to drive on the street. That's why they pay gas taxes.
To drive on a street, not to park on a street.
And to parks. Yes, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. You live in an HOA. It's a different world. But, but I'm trying to hear, to meet in the middle here if we can. Jeremy?
Hold on, hold on. So are you finished, is that your substitute motion, that you would agree to the permit, but instead of a one-year, you want a two-year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So you're technically asking for an amendment?
Okay. All right. Then I'll ask for an amendment, okay?
Okay.
I just disagree on the, on the way you explained it, okay? That's all.
Can I, just for clarity, ask a question? So it would be two, two years, essentially $27.50 a year, and everything that the mayor has put into her motion?
That's fine. I'm with that. The toolbox is okay with me. I just don't like the rhetoric of cost recovery when we are here to serve the public from the taxpayers, okay?
So I think I could be willing to support that if you, you don't have to make a full commitment.
So I'm going to, yeah, I'm asking for the amendment here, I'm sorry.
Again, this may not be enough. I don't know. Well, let's see.
It may not be enough.
Would you be willing to bring this, you know, to allow this to come back in a year or two so we can analyze the results?
Well, of course. They'll bring it back anyway. I think anything that we ask to bring back in a year never comes back anyway. But we can, I can agree to it, okay? Because most people, they have dementia, and after a year or two, it doesn't ever come back.
I'm not sure about that, but I'll definitely second that motion.
And I mean it in a nice way, okay?
I won't forget that.
Councilmember Staubach.
Yeah, well, we're talking about an 86-cent sticker. That's what the staff report says the sticker's going to cost. I'm going to stand firm on the waiver of fees for the people that are doing it the right way. I want this ordinance to happen. It's been going on, we waive the fee, I give you the vote. I hate to make a threat, but I mean, it's really kind of a final stand here.
Okay. Councilmember Vega, I appreciate your yielding to the concept. And so I will go two years for $55. It just means that it's $27.50 for, for each year. So I, I'm good with the adjustment of a two-year permit for the $55 with 100 feet within your residence for parking. And would ask that, since we're doing a two-year permit, if we could have a report at a year as to how many permits were issued, what kind of response we have. Councilmembers?
Just real quickly, I can imagine for the, you know, the issues come up for those that are in apartment complexes that may have to walk more than 100 feet to where they park their car. So let's just have some openness to being adaptable. Should we find that the denser housing, 150 feet or something?
If they find issues, I am sure PD and/or legal will bring it back to us of, we've created conflicts and we need to solve these. So, because, because I don't want to make your job worse. So don't hesitate to bring it back to our attention sooner than a year. But I think at a year, hearing whether or not it's helped or created more problems is important. And so setting it as part of the request is, is, we'll go with two years for $55, 100 feet within the residence where possible, and a one-year update, since it's a two-year permit. Does all of that make sense, Madam Clerk?
And it was seconded by Councilmember Ball? Is that correct?
Now that I've added the one-year report?
I'll second second again.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or concerns? You ready? Okay. Let's vote. And that passes 3-1. Thank you very much. Okay. Item number 17. I had asked that this have a specific date to come back, so I have the report for the City Council's Ad-Hoc Committee Regarding Possible Revisions to the Alonpoke Municipal Code Regarding Cannabis Uses. So I will hand it off to Councilmember Ball, who had asked to form the ad hoc, and see if there's anything he'd like to report out or have any suggestions about moving forward. I know that the state is still working on things, and I know that we followed the state in our rulings. So anything you could provide feedback on or suggestions, I'll toss it to you.
So I think we've had, you know, on our own time, we've had a few conversations. And this is a, this is a, this is, as I've learned, has become a complicated moving target, meaning that the state put all their regulations up and thought, this should work. And they found out the hard way that it's not working really well. So a lot of things are in flux and that's affecting a lot of the parts of the industry that I don't think the city, no matter what it did, would affect some change. So I do feel, all that said, I do feel that at some point, it is important for us as a city council to take this seriously in terms of maybe looking at our regulations and making sure that we're adapting to the future. And what I mean by that is as the rules change and the industry changes, this city is somewhat dependent upon that revenue that we hope that we get from our commercial establishments. And if we're just saying, well, let the free market figure it out, and the whole thing implodes and we have nothing, then we get to sit here and say, well, there goes 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars a year to the general fund. So I appreciate the conversations that we've had so far. I do think there are some things moving at the state. I do think we should bring this back and take it very seriously. And we should take advisement from people throughout the industry. But at this time, I don't think there's something that we can easily move on that's going to affect the change that the industry is seeking at the moment. But I look forward to having one-on-one conversations and potentially standing up an ad hoc in the future.
So let me propose this, that we sunset the ad hoc for now. And as soon as we start to see a change at the state level, since we match the state's rulings and we start to see that change, or something massive within the industry moving something forward with the state, we can stand the ad hoc back up. That way, it's not hanging out there for either of you to try and meet and do something when there's really nothing that we could, as you say, we could do to change the industry from here up right now. So that would be my suggestion, is to potentially sunset the ad hoc, monitor what's going on, work with legal. And as we see any potential changes coming down, we revisit the discussion and invite the industry to the table when we do, as we did the first time.
I think that's, I think that's great. It's super important. And again, let's, let's be conscious of this. We all can drive around this city, and I can point to that one that closed, I can point to that one that closed. And we're hopeful that some of you that are still open, just stay open and keep paying your taxes. But let's be, let's keep our eye on this. We want to be supportive to the industry because it is helping our bottom line. It's giving us revenue that we depend upon in public safety and in many things. So I don't want to fully blow this off. I think it's important to bring back. But at this time, again, state's got to get their stuff in line. We need to know what they can and cannot do so that we can know what we've got to, how we should fill in the gap perhaps. So that's where I'm at.
Councilmember Vega?
Yeah, and I concur. And the mayor thanks you for boxing that up. It was very difficult to get involved in trying to change a, an industry or a market without looking at the state guidelines and what they're doing here. So out of respect for the industry also, and the revenue that they generate, as we accepted all of these businesses as members of our community, you know what I mean? And I think with all due respect, that's how they would expect to be treated also. So that's why I think it's better just to look at the state level and monitor it from there. Thank you.
Okay. Before we make a decision, we need to accept public comment. So if anyone would like to speak on this item, you may come to the podium for three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201.
Hello. My name's Lindsay Silva. I'm a manager at the Greenhouse Collective here in town. As a city, Alonpoke has allowed 15 physical storefronts, 19 total cannabis retail businesses to open. As of today, July 18th, there are nine storefronts open and 10 retail cannabis businesses that have closed, leaving six vacant buildings. Vacant buildings are already a problem for our city. With cannabis retail commercial buildings garnishing triple net for rent, it's hard to fill those vacancies with anything other than cannabis retail. But because the retail side of cannabis is clearly oversaturated in Alonpoke, most cannabis businesses with the working capital to go in those buildings aren't going to bother to compete or will monopolize the industry, creating more vacancies. With 40% of cannabis retail closed since 2018 here in Alonpoke, it's imperative that we support this industry while it's still viable and has the capacity to create sustainable economic growth. By giving the cannabis industry a better foundation, coupled with how heavily the cannabis industry is already taxed, the city of Alonpoke would be wise to implement a cannabis department to provide structure and stability to the budding industry. Furthermore, promoting and allowing a tourism program surrounding cannabis. Alonpoke has some of the most cannabis retail stores per capita in the entire state. With proper support, the cannabis industry has the potential to actually create economic vitality here. I would really appreciate a little bit more inclusion of the cannabis stores. It would be really nice to actually be respected here in town and actually heard. As a manager, I have already seen how we've had to cut and be competitive and create a very hostile industry. And that industry is going to leave very quickly, especially if we don't do anything about it as a city. I would really appreciate, again, the city actually taking it seriously. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we'll bring it back to council for any further discussion or a motion. I will make the motion that we sunset the ad hoc until there is more information and potential resolution that we could provide. And Councilmember Ball?
Sure. Is there any way to, that's pretty open-ended, so it could be 10 years. Is there any way to suggest that at least in six months, a year, or something that we come back sooner, or?
Well, the thing about an ad hoc committee is you can stand it up at any time. So I think forcing another review without you actually meeting actually puts more on you and sets you potentially up for failure. And so what I would much prefer is saying, sunset with the ability to reinstate it based on council's discretion or staff recommending to us. And so it just requires us to monitor as we, we have been and bring it up. And so keeping up our contacts with the industry, keeping our contacts at the state level and monitoring the local industry through our report. I asked the city clerk this afternoon to, to print out one of the most updated reports, and in particular focused on, you know, the fact that we have 10 licensed and operational, we have seven that have closed and have either revoked or surrendered their license. We have five licensed businesses that are not operational, so they've been permitted but haven't opened and may not, depending on when they received. Some of those received their permits in the early days and at this point, never opened. And we have six applications not yet completed. So, you know, it's an ebb and flow like any other industry, and I think it's having an ebb. It's not, it's not having the green effect it was. And as a result, it's having some growing pains in the state. And its overtaxation is part of the issue. So until the state rectifies how that taxing is done, makes a mandate for more cities to have to have dispensaries and opens that market up, I think there's very little else Alonpoke really can do because we have been supportive to the industry. We didn't put any limits on it. And so it's upon us, because we're one of the few cities that did this, to just, to just monitor it. And if we see the state making movement to improve the scenario, that we follow and improve it by following state mandates because that's been a safe and, I hate to say easy, because I know it's not been easy for staff because we don't have a cannabis department, but we also treated the industry as if they were any other business. And so I think if the business isn't feeling supported by the city, I'm not sure how we could change that, given we have streamlined the process as much as possible. We are very reasonable in our costs. We're very reasonable in our taxation compared to other communities. And I know that engaging with the chamber often assists. I know some of the dispensaries have engaged there and gotten better support. So I think it's on us to just monitor it. And when we see a potential to implement change, it's on us to bring the ad hoc back. So I think, I think it's dangerous to start setting, let's revisit this every six months. I don't know that that's, it's healthy.
Well, I appreciate that. Again, it's, hindsight is 2020, obviously, but for example, you know, we have a free market here. We have 15 places open. Sandless Bistro right now is only entertaining their third license because they took a different approach and said, hey, let's base it on demand and let's grow. We don't necessarily have that choice here, and that's disappointing. Something that the lady said that we should take seriously, and it is those impacts that we don't think about, is when we talk about economic growth, if I have a bunch of empty buildings that are all fixed up, but they're triple net, no one's opening a bakery in that building. No one's going to open a building or a business that's going to barely break even. I mean, that's just restrictive. So we have to be thoughtful about the full business climate. I do appreciate what you're saying, let's not respect any industry over the other. But we also have to think about those, those impacts that are going to happen. And my fear is, we've got shiny new buildings that are closed now, but no one's going to afford to be in them for any other purpose than cannabis because this council decided that's what we want to do. So there are things that I think we could consider sooner than later with industry support, with the people being educated. And that is saying, look, do we need to have all of these zones where landlords are feeling confident and hopeful that someone might come in and pay three times what someone else might? We should consider those impacts. I feel that's important too. So again, I, maybe we don't have to insist on six months or a year, but I fear this is going to slap us in the face before we know it.
Well, I don't think you need an ad hoc for that, right? Like, it's, if it's something very particular that you think might be helpful, you could make a council request to, and get support to have staff revisit that and look at something very, very specific. So you don't actually necessarily need an ad hoc for that. You could, you could ask staff to do an analysis of the zones. And does it make sense to continue having all of the city, except those that are located next to schools and childcare and youth facilities, being limited? So, so that is a very specific idea that doesn't necessarily need the ad hoc to move forward. And that, and that, that's the kind of thing, the ad hoc is designed to sit down, have big discussions, sort of brainstorm, engage, and come back with a plethora of options. If you've got a very specific idea, you're already empowered as a council member to propose it as a potential idea to gain to other council members to request of staff to, to bring it back and, and do the deep dive and provide the additional information. So, so you're not taking away any tools by taking away the, sunsetting the ad hoc unless there's a need to stand it back up for a bigger analysis.
I appreciate that.
Or a larger concept.
I appreciate that reminder. I need to take advantage of that. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So again, my motion is to sunset the ad hoc on this for the time being and stand it back up at any time that any of us observe that there is major motion going on within the industry or at the state level.
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 4-0. All right. Madam Clerk, did we have? Madam Clerk, did we have any written communications?
No ma'am, nothing.
Okay. This is your opportunity for the final oral communication for the evening. You have two minutes. If you would like to speak, you may come to the podium. You have two minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if anybody gets up, I'll go ahead and say thank you to the staff. Parks and Recs did an amazing job with the bicycle ride parade on the Fourth of July. We had an even bigger turnout than we had last year. It was great. And then fencing in the park and having all of the fun things to do and the food trucks, and then the weather held out. So I don't know who ordered that. It was awesome. It was a great day. So thank you guys for doing that. Seeing no one rise and no one call in for oral communications, we'll bring it back to council. We'll start with Councilmember Ball.
Surprise, I have a council request, and I would like to see if there is a way for staff to come back with some sort of basic analysis on the effectiveness of our cannabis zones. And I guess a little guidance is as we discover that there may be zones with little or no activity, then perhaps council can see that and look at that and analyze whether or not some sort of adjustment might be made in those zones. And then I have a couple of things to report.
I will give you a second on that, so you just need a third.
I have a question about this. Isn't, aren't the zones determined by the law? X amount of feet from schools, childcare, youth activities, et cetera, et cetera?
Those, those radius zones are determined by the state law, but the city also has our zoning districts where certain kinds of cannabis uses are allowed in certain zoning districts and not in others.
And the state did allow cities to determine whether they wanted to, so Pismo itself has dispensaries in only a certain zone. So I know that they did allow cities to.
We can create our own, our own radius zones too, if we'd like.
Right, right. So we do have that leeway.
Yeah, I got in trouble, so I'm not going to participate.
So I need a third. Councilmember?
I need a little bit of clarification here. I think staff would probably appreciate a little more direction on an analysis of the zones. So you're talking about revenue streams, occupancy, do we have any vacant zones, or do we have, is it revenue stream compared to other zones? Or, you know, a little direction might be a little bit more, more helpful for them?
So I'm not sure we could tap into revenue stream comparisons because I'm sure the lawyer will say, you don't necessarily get to see all of those numbers. But I guess added clarity on the, on the actual zones themselves?
I think so. I'm not sure exactly which direction, if you're looking on for revenue or occupancy.
So to your question, I think occupancy is the thing I'm referring to. If we, if we made all these zones, because we thought everything was going to shoot to the moon, and then we realized, oops, it's not going to work out that way, then if there are some zones with very little occupancy or no occupancy, by definition, we're making it cost prohibitive to any other industry to benefit from that space.
Right, and you mentioned something about vacant buildings is the reason I brought that up, okay? So I just wanted to ask you if a little more direction might be.
So I, I hope that makes sense for occupancy versus revenue. It's like, are there even operations in those?
Can I offer a suggestion? I think the easiest thing to do would be bring back our current city zone and show where there might be concentrations of cannabis and where those that have closed and lost their license used to exist, and if they were one entity in that, say, business or industrial area, there would be potentially the opportunity for us to decide to not allow cannabis in that in order to potentially drop the triple net costs, rather than continuing to only be appealing to those landlords to lease to cannabis because the prior leasing had done that. So I, I think that's the best way to do it, is to show where they all existed, who's now not existing, and where that improved building might exist but is empty, and if there might be opportunities to say, well, this industrial park area doesn't have any cannabis in it, so it might be an opportunity to protect it from becoming dominated by cannabis again, just from lessons learned. Does that help staff a little bit, rather than it being all over the place?
So I'm very visual, so again, if we can show where people used to be, they're not there anymore, I mean, that, that would be great. And that might show us, me at least, whether the industry is growing here or dwindling. And if we can make that decision and can see the writing on the wall and maybe see some visuals, maybe we make a decision to tighten up some of these regulations so that we can maintain a healthy industry here that we benefit from, our revenue stream. So that's all the guidance I can think of.
Does that help?
I think that helps. I just, vacancy rates, is that, if we're coming back to be more informed as a council, I'm all for that. I mean, it doesn't have to require an action item at the time, but if you're okay with that. But for us to get smarter about what's out there, I mean, actually, the information is not a bad thing.
Knowledge is power, so.
Knowledge is power, so as far as to find out if there are many zones that are basically mostly vacant, it'd be good for us to know.
Okay, so that helps you, to support it.
It helps somebody.
Okay, alright.
Okay, real quick, is, do we need anything else on that? Am I on to reports?
No, no, I saw, yep, we got three.
Perfect. I just wanted to thank the mayor for putting this on my radar some time ago. It was, I think, two or three years ago, the first or second Pedal of the Pacific event came in, and there was a small turnout and a few people. The police department was there, and we, you know, showed full support. And I'm just so thankful for your leadership on this and people like Ann McCarty and AAUW of not only just inviting me to an event, but making sure I'm educated about the issue of sex trafficking, labor trafficking, and some of these, and learning that it actually happens in our own city, our own county, and that's definitely a lot to consider. But I appreciate the city, both on the private side, the nonprofit side, and the city stepping up to show this group that's trying to bring attention to something that's just horrific, to show them so much support and show them that Longpoke is a kind and compassionate city. I was very proud to attend last night and to see that, that turnout there. So I just wanted to say thank you for that leadership, and I hope that we continue to do good things for people who need it most.
Thank you for attending. Councilmember Vega, up next.
Thanks. Thank you. I have one council request. Let's see where this goes. We did have a request to revisit the amount of compensation for the fireworks booths for the nonprofits. I'd like us to at least address it and see and have this, bring it back as an agenda item just to discuss, because there is a valid, I think it's something we should address. I just think that we should have that discussion. As far as compensation for the fireworks, safe and sane for the booths, for the nonprofits.
I second that.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Ironic. When Mr. Agba Dyke, might have got his name wrong, came out several meetings ago in our financial reports, there's a lot of money there. There's three separate accounts in the general fund, one of them over 100,000 that the city maintains. I didn't bring that favor work tonight because I wasn't intending on bringing that request. I will give you your third.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Alright. Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, being that it's a night of council requests, I have one also. April 2014, we stood up our contract complacency. The following month, the city of Longpoke, under the Administrative Procedures Manual, it is Chapter 45, wrote a procedure for this. Just had the meeting here on July 11th, our first one since July 30th of 2018, and kind of going in line with Councilwoman Cordoba with, let's review some of our stuff. I'd like to maybe put this on an agenda for council to review because all we talked about was three organizations, and we received a report tonight on our housing, but we still didn't come into this like we should have. We were missing a date. I, I just, all my request is, is let's review Chapter 45.
I will give you your second.
Third.
Alright. Okay. Alright. Oh, it's always important to review policies. Maybe we could streamline it and improve it, and it doesn't have to be as many pages. Nothing else to report?
No other reports.
Alright. Thank you all for the discussions this evening. We made some difficult decisions, and I, I know that, you know, we're never sure when we implement something new, if it'll work, and so it's important to at least make an effort to improve the quality of life for our community. Several things have happened in the nearly a month since we had a meeting. We had a promotion of Officer Magania at Longpoke Police Department, so congratulations, and thank you for the invitation to that. We had the Flower Festival Parade, and the council entered its first float, and unfortunately, Councilmember Starbuck and Councilmember Vega couldn't join us that day, but it was really nice. We heard lots of feedback about how much people enjoyed seeing us on a float rather than in random vehicles that they couldn't see and didn't know it was us. So the city manager's already volunteered to coordinate a Christmas float for us and got very excited. He, he towed us. It was his vehicle and he towed us, so thank you very much for doing that. I attended the California Transportation Committee meeting in, just outside of Sacramento for the Santa Barbara County Area of Governments, which I'm currently chair for, at which point SB CAG was awarded 1.32 million dollars in matching funds to finalize much of the traffic that you encounter when you go to South County, so this will help finish the 101 South County expansion so they can move to the North County expansion as part of Measure A. My typical job responsibilities with the assignment to the Northern California Power Agency, I attended that meeting, and it's paid for by NCPA and, and the city. YMCA has an advisory board workshop and invited me to attend and provide insight on what the city's doing and where we could partner, and I want to thank the YMCA for all it does for our community. They fundraise, and 100% of the funds they raise in Longpoke stays in Longpoke, which is really important to our community. As I mentioned earlier, the July 4th Bike Parade and the Family Fun Day, thank you for organizing that and for everybody that came out. It was, it was a great day. Old Town Market. We, city councils in the booth with city staff. I want to thank the city staff that are working it. There's some really great information that is being rotated through the booth on Friday nights, so don't hesitate to come out. And as the city manager said, the weekend of the 11th, 12th, and 13th, we will be celebrating our 135th birthday, so make plans to come out and join us. We're losing Colonel Long out at Vandenberg Space Force Base, so we attended his retirement party. City manager, Mr. Albro, attended with me. An amazing individual, and we will, are sad to lose him and the partnerships that we've worked on, but Change in Command was the following day, which we also both attended, as well as Councilmember Cordova, and the new general, Colonel that's coming in, Shoemaker, is just as amazing, so he, we've already had a conversation about extending that work and continuing that partnership, which is really exciting. And then, as I mentioned, the Pedal of the Pacific group was here the past two days, and again, I just want to thank all the community members that turned out, all of those that supported and donated and helped sponsor these young women. And then the last reminder for the police department, National Night Out is August 1st, and that's also a council meeting, but it's from 5 to 8, so you can go to that, and then when the council meeting starts at 6:30, you can come on over here. It'll be at Thompson Park. So we will adjourn this meeting until the next regular meeting at 6:30 PM, August 1st, 2023.